Good evening. It's 6 o'clock. We will begin the August 6th City Commission meeting. City Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mayor Adamcheck?
Present.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Here.
Commissioner Mata?
Here.
Commissioner Mitten?
Here.
Mayor, we have five Commissioners present. The quorum of three is met.
Thank you. Please stand and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Please remain standing after the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like us to observe a moment of silence to honor Ty Voth, a young firefighter who was killed last week in Wichita while he was on duty. Ty began his career here in Manhattan, served two years with our fire department. His uncle, Matt Voth, is one of our captains. So I'd like us to just acknowledge his service. Please keep his parents, his three siblings, his extended family, and his friends in your hearts. Thank you. You may be seated. This is the time of our meeting when we have an opportunity to hear public comments for the City Commission for items that are not related to the agenda. As of general practice, we will not discuss or debate these items, nor will the City Commission make decisions on items presented during this time. You should address all comments and questions to the Commission. You're limited to one speaking opportunity for up to five minutes. Is there anyone who would care to make any public comments?
And I have a letter and copy of these comments as well.
Thank you.
My name is Josh Brewer. I'm with Habitat for Humanity of the Northern Flent Hills. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to provide public comment on an item not on the agenda this evening, but of which is of great concern to our organization. That is the status of the city's housing rehabilitation program, which is a federally funded program by the Community Development Program. In addition to my public comment, I have submitted a letter from the Executive Committee and my Board of Directors on this matter. According to the city website, from 1999 to 2016, the housing rehab program assisted 227 homeowners and their families, preserving more than 12 homes per year. In 2011 to 2016 alone, more than $520,000 in CDBG funds were used to rehabilitate 71 homes that would have otherwise been left in disrepair. According to the city manager's memo, over the past five years, this program has served another 38 families, providing a critical resource for seniors and low-income families in our community. Over the past three years, we have been working with staff and community development to design a public-private partnership to deliver this program in a more cost-effective and impactful manner. This year, we worked with the city staff to demonstrate a pilot of that partnership with the goal of bringing a contractual agreement to this commission for review. Thanks to their willingness to partner with our organization, we built ramps, replaced rotten doors and leaky faucets, added smoke detectors, hung drywall and siding, installed flooring, patched subfloors, and replaced structural carpentry and masonry. With our partnership with the city, we made federal dollars go further for our neighbors while allowing for additional funds to go to professional partners who replaced HVAC units and set that structural masonry. This was a partnership based on trust and a shared mission. This was a partnership that worked. In early July, we were informed that staffing changes within community development would impact the housing rehabilitation program. I've been assured by the acting city manager and the Director of Community Development that the housing rehabilitation program has not been suspended, but is in a rebuilding period following the termination of program staff. As this is our only funding source for critical home repairs in the 50% to 80% AMI range, which includes key workforce housing categories, we too have been forced to pause our home repair operations in the city of Manhattan for the small number of owner-occupied households above the very low income limits. This is the majority of our home repairs in the city of Manhattan will now no longer have a funding source. As these funds support critical home repairs, a pause in our program delivery can have devastating consequences. Last fall, the State Historic Preservation Office delayed our use of these funds on a project on Pierre Street. Because we were not able to build an accessibility ramp in time, one of our homeowners, my neighbor, fell, hit his head, and died. His wife remained in the home, unable to safely enter or exit as we scrambled to find additional funding sources. By the time we were able to complete the structural repairs to the home, she too had become sick. One of the last things she asked her son was for an update on her porch, of which she was very proud. She passed before we could build her ramp. While most of our home preservation projects end on a happier note, I share this story to illustrate that delays have consequences. So let's not delay in rebuilding this program. To move forward, the city needs to enact an immediate plan to fulfill the commitments of the current funding year and a longer five-year plan for the next funding cycle. Our organization stands ready to support the community development team in program delivery and direct programmatic services as we have been demonstrating for more than a year. Our organization is also prepared to support the city in designing and conducting necessary public engagement to ensure that the long-term utilization of these federal dollars best meets the community's needs. We believe that everyone in Manhattan deserves a decent place to live, and we are doing the work to make that vision of reality. We need a partner in the city, and we need to work together to best serve the needs of this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Is there anyone else who would like to make public comment? Please approach the podium.
Good evening. My name is Roger Seymour. I've got a prepared statement. I will try to read it, but I'll probably have to skip over a couple of things in the essence of time. I'm a member of an LLC, which owns and rents properties in Manhattan. March of 2023, we rented to an out-of-state, out-of-country family from Afghanistan. Lease had a beginning date of April 1. It was a standard Section 8 lease with a 12-month lease. Because they had children, they asked to extend the lease. We did grant that extension to them. They told us they were going to be moving out of state and would be out of the property mid-July. They elected to have a checkout of the property July 27. In the meantime, we had rerented the property for August 1 occupancy based upon their mid-July checkout time. The tenant that we were putting in was a critical-needs tenant. She had been abused. Most people wouldn't rent to her. She has no credit. We took her. Just like the Afghanistan family. Many people wouldn't take Afghans. Don't know why? They wouldn't. We've never had a problem with them. When the Afghans wanted to check out, we offered a free lease inspection to them. They didn't want to do it. They wanted to do a checkout the 27th of July, about two weeks after they told us they wanted. So we have four days to get the property ready. Myself and another member of our LLC arrived at the appointed time to conduct the checkout. We found numerous problems with the property. Items were damaged. Items were broken. Furnace had not been properly serviced, as per the tenant's lease. Numerous walls needed to be repainted and patched and repaired. There was a broken window. Now, this had passed a Section 8 inspection about three months prior to that. The Afghanistan had two people representing them, a fellow Afghanistan person and a citizen of Manhattan. The fellow countryman was very polite, very nice. We started to do our checkout findings. The Afghanistan tenant became very agitated at our findings. We were not putting any dollars to, just conditioning what we had to do. The American friend asked to see our original files. We said, "You're not a signature to the lease. You have no party of this lease. You're here at their request, but you have no right to look at these documents." My wife had been called, because normally checkout takes about 45 minutes. About the 45th minute or so, I called my wife, and she came over, and she was reviewing the documents. This female friend became very belligerent. Basically tried to steal our documents, our original documents. Tried to take them without permission, being told by my associate property manager, myself, and my wife that she had no right to look at them. She tried to grab them. My wife picked them up. She held them to herself. This individual had the gall to attack my wife. I had to step in between them. She made physical contact. Police officers were called. Officer Tracy, the Riley County PD, has issued a lifetime criminal trespass warning against that individual. How does it affect this City Commission, you're asking? Why am I telling you this story? Why am I relating this account? Because that female in question is here in this building today. Today.
Yeah, it's me.
She sits on the City Council. She's the mayor. If a prior mayor left the City Council for a non-person contact offense, I think this mayor should strongly consider resigning for attacking someone. This isn't right, Mayor. People need to know what you are like. You're not a nice person. I would like your resignation. I know you're not a person enough to do it.
Are there any additional public comments?
Hi, I'm Liz Nelson. I'm the Director of the Manhattan Senior Center, and I'm here to support Josh Brewer and the Habitat for Humanity request. Let the county commission and those involved limit or lift the freeze on the CDBG funds for housing rehabilitation. According to the latest U.S. Census Bureau information, 92% of people over the age of 65 say they prefer to age in place. There are only 10% of American homes are aging threat. For those unable to fund changes and improvements, the CDBG funds are the key to making aging in place a reality. The housing rehab funds available through the city of Manhattan keep seniors in their homes safely, decreasing emergency department visits and cutting down on preventable injuries, long-term rehab stays, and other health care costs for those individuals. So please take these into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Any further comments? Seeing none, we will close the comments from the public. And this is an opportunity for Commissioners to offer comments. Thank you. Jamie?
I just want to thank Susan and John and Tammy and Katie and Lynn Barbosa of SGR. They did a really great job with the candidate search for a new city manager. It was a really tough job. We got a lot of candidates, and they had a lot to sift through. And I really do believe that we found a really great candidate. So thank you all for your hard work. I know it was not easy, so thank you.
I'd just like to thank Everybody Counts. For last Saturday, we had an incredible turnout to help people get ready for school and fall. Thanks to Deb Nuss, who heads it up. And it was really great to see all the different... The vets were there, the hairdressers, everybody was there. And so it was really fun. And it was a pretty warm morning.
I would just echo this. I believe that the event this year was the largest that has been held. And it was wonderful to see so many support agencies out and providing very much needed services in our community. So thank you. I see some of you in the room, who, your organizations were present. We appreciate all that you do for the community. We will now move on to our consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are those of a routine and housekeeping nature or items that have previously been reviewed by the City Commission may have been approved and may be approved in one motion. A Commissioner may request that an item be removed for a separate discussion and considered immediately following the consent agenda. Is there any comment from the public related to items on the consent agenda? Oh, no, sorry. Comment from the public is permitted. Each person is limited to one speaking opportunity for up to five minutes. Is there anyone who would like to address items on the consent agenda? Okay. Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Do we have to ask Commissioners if we... Commissioners, any items to be removed? Thank you. Thanks, Karen.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Second.
Commissioner McCullough has moved to approve the consent agenda. Commissioner Mitten has seconded. City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes, except no on H2.
Commissioner Mitten?
Yes.
Mayor Adamcheck?
Yes.
Motion carries 5 to 0 with the exception of H2, which carries 4 to 1.
I would like to note, as you can see on the agenda, that several appointments have been made to external city boards and committees, including the Airport Advisory Board, the Farm and Food Council, the Housing Appeals Board, and the Joint Corrections Advisory Board. We thank those members of our community who are willing to serve on these advisory boards. Our first item in the public hearing is consider amending special assessments for Meadowlark Hills for the U.S. 24 Turn Lane Project.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. In 2021, the Meadowlark Entrance, U.S. 24 Transportation's Improvements, were approved via public hearing process. The resolution listed the split to the city at large and benefit district in that order. Normally, resolutions are listed as benefit district share first and then city at large share second. And so that is why we are at this meeting. The information presented back in February had the split listed in the opposite order, and the property owners were notified with the incorrect information. So today, we are having a public hearing to discuss that. And the public hearing was published in the Manhattan Mercury on July 27. The purpose of the public hearing is to hear up questions or objections from property owners concerning their amended assessments. Each year, when we have our special assessment process, the information is sent to bond counsel for them to review. And bond counsel noticed that there was that flip of the apportionment. And so we are required to update that information. Here's a map of the improvements. And here is the information per the resolution. So the resolution listed the city at large first at 28.642%, and then the benefit district share. Normally, with our spreadsheets and everything like that, the benefit district share is listed first, and then the city at large. So the process was different for this particular set of improvements. There was an oversight in terms of the spreadsheet and getting that information in there correctly. So per the resolution, this was the split. 71.358% to the benefit district, city at large 28.642%. There was a KDOT share factored into those estimated costs. And then the respective apportionment to the benefit district is listed below. The special assessment proceedings listed it at 28.642% to the benefit district and then the city at large having the majority of the assessment, which was incorrect. And this is the corrected set of assessments. It should be 71.358% to the benefit district and then 28.642% to the city at large, and then broken out accordingly. As of July 26, this is the amount per lot and then the amount that's supposed to go to the city at large and the variance based on what was previously notified. There were a couple of property owners that have paid to date and then the remaining balance of what should be assessed. Our next steps: approve of the amended special assessment ordinance to be considered on August 20. And then, second letters will be sent out giving the property owners till September 19 to pay, if they choose, the balance. And if not paid, they will appear on the November 2024 tax statements.
Thank you, Rena.
Thank you.
Does any Commissioner have a question for Rena about this?
Yeah, so the property owners of the benefit district are going to end up having to pay more?
Yes, because that is their original assessment.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I had which one was which straight. Okay. Thanks.
I'll now open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to make comment on the corrected assessments? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Are there any questions for Rena? Thank you. So we need a motion to approve the first reading of an ordinance amending special assessments against the benefiting properties of the Meadowlark Entrance in U.S. 24 Left Turn Frontage Road Transportation Improvements Project ST 2110.
I move that we approve the first reading of an ordinance amending special assessments against the benefiting properties of the Meadowlark Entrance at U.S. 24 Left Turn Lane slash Frontage Road Transportation Improvements Project ST 2110.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Opel has made the motion, and Commissioner Mata has seconded. Can we... City Clerk, can we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitten?
I'll abstain.
Mayor Adamcheck?
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Motion carries 4 to 0 to 1.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We will now move on to the general agenda. Again, comments from the public related to any item on the general agenda is allowed. Each person will be allowed five minutes. Up to five minutes for each item in this section. So our first item is considering allowing a connection to city sewer lines for 1712 Murray Circle.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. Again, we have a request from the owners of 1712 Murray Circle to connect their property outside the city to the city sewer. Here's a general map of the location. It's just east of Airport Road and north of Skyway Drive. A little bit closer, you'll see the property highlighted in blue here. Two existing buildings on the property used for storage and office space. On the north side of the property, there's an 18-inch sanitary sewer main that was built with the K-18 relocation. When that main was built, it provided connections for all properties adjacent to it, assuming that they would connect in the future. Background on the request: The owners are Bruce and Diane Brady and Paul Brady. They are the owners of Manhattan Crane. They operate that business off of this property. Again, two existing structures, storage and office buildings. Both buildings have restroom facilities within it. They're both being served by temporary restroom facilities. And the request is for sewer services only, and it's being mandated by the county because they have a requirement that says no property can build a septic system if it's located within 400 feet of the public sewer. They also can't repair an existing septic system if it's within 400 feet of the public sewer. So this is essentially a mandate on the county's part. They are requesting a city water meter be installed. This is primarily so that they can be billed based on actual consumption instead of an assumed eight units per month, which is pretty high for two restrooms. And with that, they will be required to incur the cost of the installation by a licensed plumber. And they will be dedicating an easement to the city for maintenance of that meter. We have the easement. It'll get recorded with this agreement. As with all these outside-city requests, within the past few years, we look at 16 criteria to determine whether or not staff is going to recommend to allow the connection with or without annexation, which is, of course, the Commissioner's decision. I'm not going to go through these 16 criteria individually if you have any questions on them. Just a reminder, we don't have any sort of scoring that goes along with us that helps us formulate our recommendation. These are just things for us to consider. Ultimately, staff recommended to allow the connections without... or recommended not requiring annexation. In general, this property is a part of a bigger area that we need to consider annexation in the future if we have a policy in place. There's really no sense in going after a single property at this time. Just as a reminder, every one of these agreements comes with a... A signature of this agreement is also a signature approving a petition for annexation if we ever annex the area. And it also is a... They agree not to protest annexation of a property within 200 feet of the boundaries of their property. So with that, any questions?
How do they get their water?
They have a private well.
Their own well, okay.
Not a well.
Not a well. Generally, this has happened a couple of times. I can think of Brits Farm. There's a couple of properties in Nelson's Landing. We will actually provide a used city water meter that's been pulled out of service. And then the private or the licensed plumber puts in basically a city standard meter pit. It's not common, but it helps them save money, so.
Any other comments or questions?
I move we approve an outside-city sewer service agreement for 1712 Murray Circle.
Thank you.
Have a comment?
We have to...
Have a comment?
Please. Is there anyone here who would like to make public comment regarding this sewer connection? All right. Seeing none, we have a motion to approve.
I do.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner McCullough made a motion to approve the connection to the city sewer for 1712 Murray Circle. And did Peter seconded? Commissioner Opel seconded. City Clerk, can you please read the roll?
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitten?
Yes.
Mayor Adamcheck?
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Motion carries 5 to 0.
Thank you.
Thanks, Randy. Okay. Moving on, we will consider a policy for financing residential housing projects. And we'll have a presentation by Stephanie Peterson. And we'll have a presentation by Stephanie Peterson.
Oh, there are PDFs, okay. Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, Stephanie Peterson, Director of Community Development. This evening, my approach was to present all four policies since there's some, some commonalities among them, and then we can go through one by one if there's particular questions. Before we get started and dive into the first one, I wanted to provide just a general overview. We talked about this back in May, the last time that we talked about housing policies. At that time, we proposed to the commission this two or three-year approach to housing policies, kind of open the valves, let projects come in, see what people are interested in doing, and then at any time, you can always shut that valve off and no longer allow these incentives out there. The, you probably noticed, reading through these policies, that we kept it very broad. That was for your discretion. Right now, we don't know how much interest we'll get. We don't know what type of projects will come forward. And so our approach with keeping these, these policies broad will allow you that utmost discretion to award or to select projects that you want to receive these incentives. We do still intend, after every kind of round that we award, we will go back, we will evaluate, we will reassess, and we will keep track of how much have we awarded in all of those incentives and how many units are we getting. And then the last aspect that would apply to all four of these is authorizing the city manager to set the fees, the application fees. We recognize that there are going to be certain projects that may apply for, you know, three or four of these incentives. And so being cognizant of, of how we structure the fees for those. And then the last slide I had before we talked about specific policies was just an update of that timetable of how this, this process would work. So if the commission elects tonight to approve any one of these policies, if it's the IRBs or either of the two RHID, the first round of applications would be in October. That gives staff enough time to actually develop the application to, and then to have that available for the, the community to apply for those incentives. For the workforce housing sales tax, that one is, that one's going to be structured or it's proposed to be structured a little differently. The IRB and the, the two RHIDs, that would be a rolling kind of continuous interest form and application. For the workforce housing sales tax, because you have a very finite amount of money there, we propose bundling those into two different application periods, one in April, one in October. That allows you to be able to evaluate not only the projects individually, but actually compare those projects to each other. Based on some of the recommendations right now on that housing policy and the direction you've given us, we would cap that the project would receive no more than two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. You could roughly do three or four projects a year. If you get seven applications at one time, that way you're able to actually go through and kind of compare which of those you'd want to fund. And maybe at that time, you want to fund as many as you can, but maybe you only want to fund a couple. This, having this, having this structured in a way where you have two calls for projects every year, it allows you to evaluate all the interests of this out there. Also, given the, the structure that is reflected in that workforce housing sales tax policy, the first round would, wouldn't be until April of two thousand twenty-five, and we can talk a little bit more as, as to why that would be. And the last thing on here that I wanted to mention, we've, we've kind of danced around it a little bit before, is the land use and zoning policy aspect. You'll, we, we've kind of talked about how zoning can be a, either a hindrance or it can be a tool to see certain projects, certain areas redevelop and how they redevelop. Our long-range staff is really eager at, at your direction to come before you and start talking through kind of a comprehensive approach to zoning and to land use policy. That will include looking at our future land use map and how it identifies certain areas to be, to be used in the future. And then also looking at our Manhattan Development Code, the MDC, and what changes you would like to see there to facilitate further housing projects. Again, that, you have a lot that you are, have been working on right now. We don't want to push that, but whenever you're ready, we're eager to come in front of you and begin those conversations. Any questions on the, that kind of overarching? Okay, well, we'll jump into IRBs, industrial revenue bonds. A lot of this is going to be very familiar to you because we've talked about it a couple of times, but again, IRBs can be used in one of two ways, either a sales tax exemption on construction materials or a property tax abatement where a percentage of that property tax increment can be abated for a period of up to ten years. That is for rental projects only.
I just wondered, on the, up to ten years, how are we going to, is that going to be a sliding scale as how worthy we find people? I mean, you know, how do we decide somebody gets five years' abatement and somebody gets ten?
Yes, so part, you recall the scoring criteria that we had in the original to, again, allow you the utmost flexibility in how you award these. That scoring matrix will be something staff uses to make a recommendation to the commission, but you are not bound by that. And that scoring matrix had kind of three different levels of funding. It was either the full ten-year abatement or it could be a, a five-year abatement for a hundred percent of the, the increment for five years, or you could take, I can't remember what all those breakdowns were, but that's what we would evaluate the project by and then we would present that to you. And you can either elect to go along with that or you could revise it at your discretion.
Yeah, I've been looking at a number of other places that use this property tax abatement, and I really think it's important that we don't overuse it. I mean, we want these people to have housing and we want them on the tax rolls as soon as possible. And, you know, otherwise, the rest of Manhattan is sort of picking up the price. I'm, I'm all for creating these, this housing, but I think we have to be really careful and not abate all of, Manhattan already, you know, the city already doesn't have a lot of places that pay property tax, and so I think that's something we want to be careful with.
Sure, the commission will have discretion with every project that moves forward under the abatement to determine whether or not that's a project you feel comfortable with.
Yeah, I did, I did notice that a number of places gave them a full abatement for a short time, three years, and then, you know, less going on, which I thought was sort of reasonable, too.
Yeah, there was one that it's, it could be a hundred percent abatement for the first five years, or you could do a fifty percent abatement for the full ten. And then there was a, I can't remember what our third tier was in there, maybe it was a fifty percent abatement for five years. So that's, you could structure that in a number of different ways, depending on how comfortable you are with that project, or deny that application altogether if you choose.
I would just reiterate, we have a speculative building program policy currently, and it allows for the first five years to reach a hundred percent. And then the next five is all about their performance in that five-year period. There are a variety of ways we could structure this.
Yeah.
But I appreciate your.
Just want to question the.
Yep.
The sales tax exemption and the property tax abatement have two different objectives. The sales tax exemption is to encourage rental housing throughout the entire community, whereas the property tax abatement is looking at housing, rental housing projects near and within Aggieville and downtown. And I have a map to remind us of what those areas look like here a little bit later. For the sales tax exemption, this is a, a tool that provides, that really doesn't have a, a financial risk back to the city. The requirements for the consideration of this is that you are, have a net gain of two or more units and that you have some sort of site ownership. All four policies reference site ownership. What we mean by that is you either own the site, you have the owner's consent to be applying on their behalf, or you have some sort of purchase agreement. So when you see site ownership, those are, that's how it can be defined. So for the sales tax exemption, the way that it, the, the policy's structured right now is somebody would submit a preliminary application. That's also their, their only application, but it will be the preliminary for the other programs as well. Staff would review to make sure that they're meeting those basic two requirements. We would also, and then we would work with bond counsel to draft a resolution of intent to issue IRBs. We would place that item then on the city commission. The, I'm getting ahead of myself. The reason that we are proposing that any, any interest in that sales tax exemption, that it comes straight before the commission, is again, there's minimal financial risk to the city, if at all, and we're talking about a very, a very minimal amount of money. Should this project have, have happened without this incentive? I did some quick math here earlier, so let's say that we have, just to give you an idea of, of what this looks like. And I guess I didn't bring my quick math with me, but let's say that we have a, a million-dollar project. The way that this proper, or the sales tax exemption works is you only can exempt the construction-related materials. That's typically half of the project. So we have a half million dollars. Of that half million dollars, only about two percent, which is ten thousand, is that, okay, is ten thousand, would be sales tax that the city would have received. The most of that sales tax is going back to the state. So when we talk about sales tax exemption being a really good tool to kind of help fuel this development and we say that there's minimal risk back to the city, that's, that's what we mean.
And that's if all of the materials were purchased in the city of Manhattan.
Correct, that is assuming that all the, either they were purchased here or they are being delivered here.
Right.
So we could have, if there's a contractor that's in the city of Manhattan, but let's say their lay-down yard was right outside the city limits and that's where they had materials delivered, we wouldn't collect the tax.
Right.
So it's really hard to speculate how much of those materials would actually, we would receive that revenue. It's a foregone revenue. If the project wouldn't have happened, we would never receive those, that revenue. If we issue the sales tax exemption, we're still not getting that, that minimal revenue. Any questions on the sales tax exemption?
No, I just want to kind of go back to the, excuse me, go back to the matrix that you had, the, the scoring rubric that we looked at back in May, just to point out to kind of remind all of us, we did have some scoring points about fifty percent or more of the units with rents below eighty percent AMI. And then there's a second one of, at least eighty percent of all workforce housing units are available for occupancy. So if they're not building workforce housing, they could still get some of this, but it would, it would be very hard for them to score highly on this matrix, or at least as highly as the, the workforce housing. So I really do like the flexibility there because I think as I've seen, you know, and as we've seen talking with developers around Manhattan, like new builds in that workforce housing range are very difficult to, to, to pencil out. So if we can allow some flexibility to get, you know, even some, even new builds that are in the higher range, that leaves more availability in the, in the lower-range apartments as well. So, you know, if we can relieve some pressure in any part of the market, it really relieves pressure everywhere, so, yeah, I really like the flexibility.
And just as a, as a point of clarification, the, the criteria, that was for the abatement. So the sales tax exemption, and maybe you were talking more broadly about IRBs, I just wanted to clarify that the sales tax exemption, we were never intending to use that scoring?
Yeah, yeah, no, I, yeah, I was talking about the abatement.
Okay, perfect. Okay, property tax abatement. I'm not going to run through the same to these top two bullets because they're in all of them, but the other requirement or eligibility would be that it's located, project is located within the residential development incentive zone. Here is what that incentive zone is. We talked a little bit about last time how this was created, looking at the base zoning district, looking at the, the rental versus owner occupancy of these parcels, and then looking at the, the two planning efforts that we have at both the Aggieville Plan and the Beyond Tomorrow Downtown Plan and how it really calls for some reinvestment in these areas. Just as a side note, we did label on here the, the TIF districts that we have. Any project that's within a TIF would not be eligible for the abatement because it's using the same revenue source.
Stephanie, forgive me for not remembering our early, details of our earlier conversation, but I'm particularly concerned about not kind of de-emphasizing the area south of Points Avenue.
Here?
Yeah.
Would you like me to tell you why it's not on the map?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that area is currently zoned RL, single-family residential, as well as this area right here immediately east of City Park. With the requirement that it needs to be a net two or more units, the underlying zoning would not allow for that property to redevelop using this tool.
I don't recall exactly where duplexes are in that part of town, but there are a number that are scattered through there.
That is true.
Are they non-conforming or they?
Correct.
I, I would just like to point out that when we downzoned those two areas, it was very, very important to the people living there, and it has proven to have sort of slowed the sort of downhill road that was happening to some of the structures in that area. There's a lot of grandfathered in places. There are a number of apartments that really shouldn't have five units buildings, you know, that kind of thing. But the, the ability, as with my neighborhood, to be R1 has really saved us from just a lot of issues that would have come up, particularly parking. And if you try and drive down Osage Street on the southeast side of the park, it's, it's supposed to be a two-lane highway, I mean, road, but it's, it's, there's just so much parking that, that comes with some of these places and inadequate space.
So Stephanie, only the property tax abatement is limited to this map, right?
Correct.
Is this an incremental tax abatement? So like, is it, is, do we take the baseline?
Yes.
Or, okay.
Yes, and you do that, the city has the, the authority to do that on behalf of the city, the county, and the school district. Unlike RHID, where we have to have this, the school district and the county kind of on board so they don't veto, that's not the case with IRBs.
Right.
With the abatement, you do have flexibility. You can go the incremental route to where the entities are still receiving a percentage based on the new product.
Right.
That they were receiving earlier. You just may find projects and developers approaching you with a bigger deficit or a bigger gap to fill.
Sure.
And it could be a way to bridge that gap.
Okay.
The process for this, we would have an applicant submit a preliminary application. Staff would review it to make sure it meets those basic requirements for eligibility, and then we would submit to the applicant, the formal application, we would ask them to fill that out. As a reminder, that formal application will have the scoring criteria in there. The applicant will be asked to, to do a self-evaluation of those criteria, along with a narrative for why they feel that they should receive those points. And then when the, so when they submit that formal application back to us, city staff will go through and we will also evaluate that scoring matrix. And we will bring to the attention of the commission any other relevant information that you possibly should use in your consideration. That scoring matrix can't be all-encompassing. There's certainly going to be things that we didn't anticipate that might be relevant for your decision, and so staff would make a recommendation to the commission. Before we get to a, a development agreement stage, we would ask for the commission to give us direction on is this a project you're wanting to pursue or not? And at what level are you wanting to participate? And based on that direction, we would then go back and, and draft a development agreement and work with bond counsel to, to issue those IRBs.
Stephanie, what's the current status of the scoring matrix? Is it in draft format where?
We plan to use the same scoring matrix that you were presented in, in May, and that will be a component of the application.
Okay, I, I would like to just review that once more before we finalize it.
Okay. We can certainly do that.
The additional comment, and I think Stephanie's addressed this, it's not going to be part of the formal policy. You'll see a recommendation from staff with that scoring, but it's really back to the commission to make a decision. It won't really guide us or tell us, you didn't meet enough, go back and redo. If they're going to continue to want to pursue that with the commission, that they know that scoring sheet's going to be reflective, but it's not necessarily going to drive your decision. You'll still have that flexibility if you'd like it.
Stephanie, how, I, I know we've talked about this, but how are we ensuring that these are rental projects? And then on the property tax abatement, can we, can we tie abatement to the fact that it has to stay rental?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
The property tax abatement, there will be some sort of, Jason was alluding to it, some sort of performance agreement. And in that performance agreement, it'll say that it ha, they, a lot of these things will work out with each individual application, but what we would probably do for the abatement is say every year you have to, to submit to us a lease showing that it has remained as rental. We can also look to see if the owner, the property address on GIS is even the same. And then any other provisions that are specific, or if there's any other monitoring or evaluation that you want staff to do on an annual basis, we would put that in a development agreement.
I would really like to specify long-term rental.
Yes, okay.
So every property tax abatement we've done has generated an agreement, but it but it also has performance measures on an annual basis. We have to certify to the county that those performance measures have been met. And there are even agreements that have different percentages based on their performance. So the county is always looking to us by the end of the year to certify where that property is on an abatement schedule. So it's, it's staff time going back through with the applicant, making sure that performance is there, then we sign documents through the clerk's office to the county clerk so they can run it through BODA so that percentage is appropriate.
I did wanna add, kinda going back to your question, Commissioner, as far as the, the sales tax exemption, there is no long-term monitoring of that. So what bond counsel has shared is at the time that those bonds are issued, we should, we should reasonably be able to assume that that unit is going to be rental. Um, once the commission certifies those bonds at the very end of the project, once it's built out, there is no more relationship that we have with that entity. And so at that point, they, they could turn them into, uh, to owner occupied units. I don't see that as a bad thing because right now in our community, we need housing across the entire spectrum, both owner and rental. But at the time the bond are issued, we need to, they will tell us it's gonna be rental. And it, maybe they can't find tenants when it's actually built and they have a better chance of selling them.
I mean, is there a reason we wouldn't look at IRBs for sales tax exemption for workforce housing for purchase?
For owner occupied. We aren't able to do that through state statute.
Okay.
So IRBs, they have to be commercially held. Yes. Are we ready?
Um, well, I, do we wanna, this might be a question more for the commission. Do we wanna consider, um, s- a provision for, um, restriction of income, source of income, uh, discrimination there? Uh, is that something we wanna talk about now or?
Susan, I know you'd spoke about maybe later in the fall.
I talked about, um, possibly looking to amend our nondiscrimination code, uh, code.
Okay.
Or ordinance, but I wanted to take that up, uh, later after we finish the budget issues.
Okay.
Um, I think it probably will be possibly contentious. And, um, so I don't want it mixed apples and oranges, right?
Sure. Okay. And I mean, yeah, if, if that doesn't end up working out, it's something we could still, you know, maybe pursue for this.
It could be added on a metric or?
Yeah, if we're, if we're giving incentives, I think, you know, we have.
Give points if they're.
Sure.
Doing some.
Um, okay, yeah, we'll have that conversation later then.
Any other questions on IRBs? We can always come back after we get through all of these as the pieces kind of start falling into place. Workforce housing sales tax. Again, the objective is a variety of housing structures and types, uh, within the defined workforce housing range. And per recommendation from the workforce housing steering committee, uh, they recommended that preference be given to projects that utilize existing public infrastructure. This, uh, the eligibility of how these funds can be used has been greatly expanded since our last conversation. Uh, this was a great suggestion by, by Katie in that we really want, want right now to provide the commission with the utmost flexibility and have a policy that really ref- reflects a variety of things. We can always go back at a later date and further refine this. Um, so kind of walking through what the eligible uses would be, and again, the commission has discretion on all of these. So just because it's listed here doesn't mean that you have to, uh, have to use it in this way. Um, most of what we've talked about to date has been a grant for a private workforce housing project. There is also the op- the, the opportunity to do a loan. Um, so that, that's something that's been added here. Uh, you could use this funding to, to waive fees for a workforce housing project. So we have building permit fees, we have utility connection fees. You could use this funding to, to waive those. Um, earlier on this, this summer, or the spring, uh, it was kind of the, the preference of the commission to use the workforce housing sales tax to help provide some funding for the Lytec projects that we were just awarded. That was to go towards the, the building permit fees and the utility connection fees. Um, this, uh, the, the composition of the commission's a little bit different, so that's probably a discussion that we will, we will have. But wanted to make sure we provided you that flexibility should you want to use, um, this as that funding source. Um, and then lastly, uh, it, it's gonna take some time for us to, uh, to administer this program, to review it on an annual basis, um, and to provide oversight of how these funds are being used. Uh, so we wanted to make sure we gave, uh, ourselves flexibility here to, to utilize any of that for personnel-related matters.
I just wanted to comment that I like the fact that you put that in, I think, as a budget strategy. We need to look at this type of thing as much as possible, um, in a variety of different ways to really soften the blow of, uh, those budget issues.
Yeah, I'm pretty concerned about, um, you all having adequate staff to do some of these things. One he- one, as a commissioner, one sometimes hears that things take a long time to get through planning and zoning. And I think that's probably just developers who want it to happen immediately. But, um, you're talking about one staff member that does the CWBG grants going away, and this is a lot of, of hoops to jump through. And so the person that comes in to discuss this with your person, whoever the staff person is, it's gonna take time. And, um, I, I think I'm fully in support of all this workforce housing, um, support, but I'm afraid, you know, with cutting back on your staff, that we're not going to be able to do it adequately.
It, it will take not just community development, but it will take other departments engaging in this as well. We'll have the city manager's office, uh, city attorney's office.
Legal.
Finance, yes. Um, so it's not just a, a burden that community development has to bear. It's gonna be spread out. I don't disagree with what you're saying. Um, I really feel like we need to have a better understanding of what that commitment's going to be timewise before we dedicate or add additional staff. Um, uh, we, we have some efficiencies that, that have been created, um, but I, I can't tell you right now if it means that we need another full-time individual or if it's part-time. We'll have to really kind of get into these things to better assess that. But it is, it is something that is on my radar. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, uh, we would accept applications for this in April and October. Uh, we talked about originally maybe a quarterly application. Again, some great conversations we had internally. Um, that, that quarterly approach doesn't really allow us to fully work through. Uh, let's say you award three projects in April. Those projects and those agreements are gonna take a little while to put together. Um, we wanna make sure that when we come to you in October and say commissioners, you have X amount of dollars still in the coffers, this is how much you could award, we wanna make sure that takes into consideration everything you awarded in the previous cycle. And so that quarterly approach didn't give us quite enough time to, to make sure those projects are moving forward um, and to accurately account for how much funding you had left. Um, and as I mentioned, the first round would be available in, in April of 2025. For the, the private projects, which is really what we've talked about, uh, the most often here, um, the, a couple of other additional, uh, criteria. The units are within that workforce housing rent or sale price range, and then also that the site is properly zoned. Since you have a finite amount of resources, we wanna make sure that any projects you're awarding these funding to, these funding towards, um, that they have that, that kind of hurdle of zoning already out of the way. Uh, we would hate to award a project this funding, uh, the, the zoning action fails, and then you have additional money left over that you could have potentially awarded to a different project at that same time. The funding limitation recommendation, uh, we, we have not changed that. Um, I did, uh, again, some, some additional math. Based on the, the limits that we have here, really just looking at this $250,000 number, over the next 10 years, you can do 320 units, um, at $25,000 a unit. That could be up to thirty-two, uh, thirty-two units a year. Some of the projects that you receive are probably gonna have well over the, the 10 units that's allowed here. Um, so we could actually end up having, um, a lot more units that, let's say that we have a 20-unit apartment complex come in. Well, based on this cap, only 10 of those units would be eligible for, uh, for this incentive, but you still get twice as many units, um, by awarding this money. Uh, with the, the projects in the TIF, we recognize that there is, uh, it's advantageous to the city. If we have more redevelopment occurring in our TIF, it generates more revenue that goes back into that, uh, back into that, um, funding pot. And so we have additional, uh, recognize additional opportunities, um, both per unit and a, a total project cost for any project in the TIF.
Stephanie, thanks for bringing up the, like, kind of total number of units, but I, I do wanna make sure we're kind of all on the same page on what our target number of houses to be created with, using workforce housing dollars. I mean, uh, we have quite a need and, and sometimes 320 sounds like a great number and sometime, I mean, it definitely then doesn't feel like enough at times. So I think, just in thinking through these numbers, putting those to overall, how many units are we hoping, you know, how far are we hoping this eight million dollars can go?
And if it helps, uh, this is about 10%. Three, 320 units is about 10% of what is forecasted to be needed over the next 20 years.
Across all income levels.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a hard one to figure out because if you, you could go for more, but then is it a significant enough?
Right.
Amount of money. I mean, I'd necessarily have him with, um, a number in mind. I think this is fine. I could be moved off it. It's kind of.
Yeah, it's, you know, I think the, the thing to remember is that like, any help that we can get is a benefit. Um, now, we do need to spend this wisely, but also we are dealing with market forces that are so far out of our control. Um, you know, we're doing what we can with, with what we've got. And, you know, even if we threw the entire eight million dollars, uh, at once, it, it probably, I, I don't know that we could set a, a target that would make a significant impact. Now, it's gonna make some impact, certainly. Um, but yeah, it's kind of hard to say, we, we wanna build a thousand house, or a thousand units with this eight million dollars. Well, you know, is that really gonna make a difference? I don't know.
We could, three, okay, 320 units is what you could get with this, and that's the, the low end. I guess I should also, if you have, if most of your projects are, are within a TIF, I don't know that that's actually going to happen, you would reduce that number. But there's not a lot left in our, our TIF districts right now for, uh, for this type of housing. So the, based on direction last time from the commissioners, we went away from, um, just kind of a blanket. If you fall within this range from a rent, that it would be considered workforce housing. And we used HUD's fair market, uh, fair market rents to really guide a, a per-bedroom type of approach. Um, we recognize that for the residential development, development incentive zones, um, near Aggieville, near downtown, that, that land's a little bit more pricey and, and people run into, um, some, some obstacles there in development. And so we have, uh, allowed a little bit higher rents in those areas just given the, the market pressures. I did go ahead and update the sale price, um, based on 2024 data, which we now have available from HUD. And so that, uh, sale price is 161,000 to 336,000. Um, just to, and for perspective, in 2023, that upper end was about 316. So it's gone up, uh, 20,000.
Do we wanna consider taking the floor out? I mean, if somebody can build a, a new unit for under 161,000 dollars, um, that's, that's awesome. I don't know, uh, if you could, but, um, I mean, somebody, if somebody wanting to build a for-sale unit that's gonna be under that, I would certainly have a hard time saying no. You can't have our incentive money because you're selling things that are too affordable.
I think the only argument you'll get, and you'll hear it from the chamber time, is they wanted this to be workforce housing, which was a certain, so to attract workers. And I, I totally hear you. I just.
I mean, the people that are gonna live.
I'm just giving you the reason.
The people that are gonna live in those houses are going to be working.
No, I'm just giving you.
I do think the bedroom criteria within those houses, is that a consideration?
No.
I feel like we might run into some, issues with individuals wanting to maybe build on that higher end, maybe two-bedroom or, or not necessarily ones to meet. That'll meet the demand, maybe that's okay. I just am thinking.
And actually, the reasoning for that, I did slip my mind, is that when we've talked about, was there's already a lot of incentives for low-cost housing.
Yeah, that's generally rentals though, right? So, I mean, like the, the, uh, the Lytec and stuff like that is rentals.
Yeah. I'm not, that's a argument against what you're saying.
Yeah.
Providing the argument.
Sure.
Jamie, can you elaborate on your point about the bedrooms? Because I.
On the, I mean, we're looking at the rental rates, but we didn't do on the sale prices anything that's, I mean, you could build some pretty nice, go ahead, Jason.
You could have a structure that has for-sale options that appears like a multifamily residential building. It's an, it's an opportunity for somebody to renovate or rehab an existing structure and then go for sale and be at the lower end of this. You could also have somebody out just building two-bedroom, and you may not, and it may be a large structure, but they're looking for incentives, uh, giving back, you know, meeting that minimum of two units, uh, to leverage any of the incentives. So, just other options out there. I think we gotta get out of the single-family idea of a price of a,
Sure.
of a unit and get into more structured type of opportunities when you look at these.
Yeah, you mentioned the word rehab, and I kind of thought of that as I was reading because we have criteria and it has to be new units and like, and when is a unit a new unit? It's been sitting there for five years.
Yeah.
And, and is a rehab or revitalization, I mean, does it have to be completely razed and rebuilt? Or can they use some of the bones?
Yep. We're silent on that, so it doesn't necessarily have to be new. It just hasn't have to, has to have a net gain of two or more units. So somebody could take a, an existing, uh, building that has one unit in it, and they could rehab it to add additional two, which would have a three, total of three. We don't say that it has to be new. If that's something that you want, you can certainly restrict that in the development agreement, but we've really left it pretty wide open.
No, I, I like the net gain. I think I know, I, I think I hear what you're talking about, John. If somebody wants to buy one of those older houses, um, that already has several units in it and fix it up, well, then, then we get into the issue of maybe they're in a, they're non-conforming, and if they're gonna do that much, uh, that much, then it's gonna, they're not gonna be allowed because it won't fit the zoning anymore. Um, but, yeah, I think we're getting a little bit, kind of really specific at this point, and these, these are kind of meant to be broad.
And we always have that statement, we can do whatever we want.
Exactly.
That's still in there. Uh, oh, uh, this map's just a reminder of what those, that area is that would receive the higher rent values.
Um, oh, so the, the, I know the IRB tax abatement is only in those zones. Are we gonna include those zones in the, for the workforce housing as well?
There's just an additional incentive, right?
There's just, oh, additional.
Yeah, it's just this.
Got it.
It, it gives you a little bit, you can charge a little bit more rent because it's recognized that the development costs in these areas are,
Okay.
are a little bit more difficult to do than say a greenfield site or a newer subdivision.
But somebody outside of those areas could still be eligible for, for this.
Yep, for this kind of top line right here.
They just have to, got it, okay.
And we don't differentiate for sale price between that zone and, and outside of it. And that sale price is reflected, so the, the definition that we've been kind of working with is 60 to 120% AMI, area median income, and that is a direct correlation back to that definition. Any other questions? You wanna go RHID? You still wanna talk about workforce?
I think move on to infill.
Okay. Well, maybe. The first RHID manual we'll talk about is for infill projects. Uh, this is for, to encourage projects that utilize existing public infrastructure. I have here the long list of, of eligible activities that could be under RHID. Um, as a reminder, this works very similar to a TIF. It's just for residential projects. Um, and, uh, it could actually capture the incremental gain in property tax for a period of up to 25 years. TIF is, is typically 20. Um, and I, all of these things are, are kind of consistent we've talked about. The one that I have noted down here with the asterisk is vertical construction. With the RHID infill, um, vertical construction can be funded under certain circumstances, which we'll talk about. The requirements, uh, for eligibility or consideration, uh, pretty much the same as the other ones that we've gone through this evening. Uh, here's that, that kind of special provision. If you, if the developer's looking to have a portion of that vertical construction funded, the infrastructure has to be more. The infrastructure has to be more than ten years old and the property is, or the property is included in a benefit district. That comes directly out of state statute, um, if neither of those two conditions exist, uh, vertical construction is not an eligible activity. The way that the RHID infill would work and why we kind of differentiate that from the greenfield is that this would be a pay as you go model. Uh, so the developer would be reimbursed each year, there's no upfront financing that the city would provide. So that developer would pay, uh, would pay their, their property tax. And then we would, they would end up being reimbursed, whatever that increment is, to go back towards their project. And what, when we go through the greenfield, I think that might, the infill distinction might make a little bit more sense. The RHID process, we've talked about before, um, somewhere early on, in this process, we would coordinate with the county and the school district. To make sure they're aware of, of what we're considering and see if they have any reservations about it. Um, let's see, oh, and we would do something similar to the IRB, so before we get through. Uh, really, this development plan is where a lot of the work takes place, this is where you know exactly what you're gonna get, what the square footage is gonna be, how many bedrooms, what the cost is. We'll go through all of the monitoring, before we get to that point. Uh, we'll want to make sure that the commission has kind of given us direction of, yes, this is something that we want to pursue. We will certainly report back to you on what the county and the school district are thinking, and at that point, we can determine if we, if we move forward. That's RHID infill, I'm gonna talk about greenfield and I think it might, uh, help set those two apart. So with the greenfield, um, it's to encourage housing projects that have not been developed previously with public infrastructure. Same, uh, requirements for consideration or eligibility. Except for this one, we want to make sure the property is annexed, as we talk about greenfield, there's a potential that some of those sites might not be currently in the city. We'll want to make sure that they're annexed and, and zoned before we engage. This is the same list of eligible improvements, however, vertical construction has been removed. Um, and what's been added back in its place is that you can use RHID to pay off existing special assessments. The process, I've added, um, a couple of different, I've added kind of the preliminary application and the formal application to this one. So the, the applicant would submit their preliminary application, saying they meet those three basic requirements. Staff would review that, and then we would ask them to fill out a formal application. Uh, once that app, uh, once we receive that application, we would bring that, that project forward to you. To make sure that the commission is wanting us to proceed through the RHID process. Um, and go through, and I, I added on this one, um, what those various resolutions are for, just because there's a couple of them in here. Um, we would still coordinate with the county and the school district. And then I would note under the development plan, that's again, where the financing mechanism would be determined. Uh, any sort, sort of performance metrics, the commission wants there to be included, um, and how staff would provide ongoing monitoring. I put in here a couple of examples, um, they were animated in the PowerPoint version, but, uh, that's okay, it doesn't, it still gets to the same, the same intent. Um, so this is a traditional RHID, this is, when we've talked about these in the past, this is the example that we were talking about. And this is a pay as you go method, where the city provides no upfront financing, the developers being reimbursed. So we have the, this vacant land, you can see here, um, that it was generating around three hundred and forty six dollars a year in property tax. We have a developer come in, they make improvements to the lot, they put in the infrastructure and, uh, and they build the homes on the lots. That lot value now has increased, and so the amount of taxes that we, uh, that we, the city, the county and the school district would receive. Um, is increased pretty substantially. What the RHID does is takes the increment, so the difference between the improved property tax value and what that base property tax value is. And it uses that increment to pay off whatever those improvements are that were made by that developer. It could be public infrastructure, it could be private infrastructure, um, that, that list, that bold listed list I showed you, all of those are eligible expenses. Um, for this example, we're using just a simple ten lot subdivision, where every single house is the same exact. Uh, appraised value and they have the same taxes, that is not reality, but it makes this exercise easier. With an RHID, we have to think of this district wide, we can't think of it property by property. So I've combined all those numbers together, you can see what our base ad valorem is here. And then you can see what our improved ad valorem is of about, uh, sixty thousand dollars a year. That increment that we, the city, the county and the school district would be giving up on these ten lots is around fifty seven thousand dollars a year. What it does is those property owners are still paying their property tax, but rather than that going to the three taxing entities, well, and the state gets a very small share. It's going to pay off the million dollars in improvements for this, for this project. Based on the numbers that I've used here, this would take about eighteen years to pay off. With that increment continuously going back into it, in this scenario, those property owners have zero specials. All they're responsible for paying is their property tax statement every year. I will just reiterate again, this is a pay as you go, this is when the developer is willing to take that on upfront investment. And be reimbursed back over those eighteen years, this is how most communities have RHIDs working, this is how Salina does it. Um, this is how Wichita is looking to do it, Topeka, um, they're, they're kind of talking about how they want to approach this, this. And even bond council has, has suggested this is the approach that has been most popular. Now. Our community is somewhat unique in that we have benefit districts, there is a way that we can use RHID with a benefit district. To help pay off those specials quicker. The way that would work, we have, um. Oh. Okay, this isn't the updated one, that's okay too, we'll, we'll make it work, um, so. In this scenario, uh, what I added just, uh, earlier today was that. When we have a benefit district, these ten property owners, they're paying their same property tax, but they're also paying five thousand dollars a year in specials. So under each of these numbers here, there should also be plus five thousand dollars. What that, uh, what the RHID allows then is for the increment from the property tax and, uh, uh, improvement. And the special to go towards retiring the debt that the city issued for the public improvements. Again, looking at this from a district perspective, um, we would be able to take the fifty seven thousand dollars we have in increment every year. And the fifty thousand dollars in specials that we're collecting from these property owners and be able to retire that debt in about nine years. So it takes half the amount of time because we have property owners paying their, their property tax and their special assessment. And both of those things are being combined to go back into paying off the debt. Now, what that means is that for nine years, those property owners have special assessments that they're paying. But it's not the twenty years that it would typically be. This allows us, this structure allows the city to, um, to issue debt, to pay for public improvements like we do now. Um, but we can help pay off those, the specials a little bit quicker. I'm gonna stop there and see if there's questions, see if we need to go back and talk about the infill at all and how it's different.
Um, I've just never been that keen on TIFs and things like that, and it seems to me. That not only are we not receiving property taxes on the property, not the specials. But neither is the county nor the school district, and we need their permission to do this, and. Um. I, I just think it's something we should think about.
Just so I understand, and those benefit districts, so this is something that already existed out there, that we built the infrastructure and issued the debt. But we necessarily, everything hasn't been sold. Or developed, yet.
There's, there's a cup, uh, two, two responses to your question. Under the infill policy that we talked about, the, the public infrastructure could already be there. And we could help in, um, eligible costs related to, to that project, so we could help to pay down. Some of that public infrastructure under the art, the infill policy. What we're talking about here is, correct, the, the, the project hasn't happened yet, the, the infrastructure is not there.
Saying none of it's.
Correct, yes, um, and we're talking with bond council. Of kind of chicken and the egg, do we establish the RHID first, or do we establish a benefit district? Um, we can do it both ways, it'll really just be project dependent on what bound council suggests of how we approach that. But in this scenario, um, we would have the, the RHID established and then issue the petitions for. Uh, for the benefit district.
Okay.
One additional comment I would make, we've been doing benefit districts for over thirty years in Manhattan. Every time a developer comes to us for an annexation, a zoning, it is quickly followed by petitions. At which the commission has the discretion to vote yes or no. Those petitions are to form a benefit district. They allocate special assessments to each of the lots within that subdivision. We then, if accepted, we go out and bid the water, the sewer, the storm and the streets. And we build it all. We take that responsibility, once we're complete, then the developer can go into that subdivision and start building their homes. For three and a half years, there's a window that developers have to either build or sell those properties without paying those specials. And it's usually the blitz that they have to get their properties sold so they can move on to the next subdivision. This process has really allowed our home building and, and development to remain local. We have had out of town folks come in and they truly have been our problems. They come in, put the infrastructure in, they start, and they no longer want to continue, and that's really the. Description of Lee Mill Village. Unique concept, fifty two, four townhome structures, um. Hard thing to really get done in Manhattan, um, but at the time, the infrastructure was put in, developer went on his way. If we get back into a, a traditional single family, twenty, thirty lot subdivision. The RHID under this scenario, actually. In my opinion, if you're gonna continue to do benefit districts, this scenario actually gives the city more financial cover. Without it, you're just relying on specials by some owner to pay you over time. If you have an RHID as part of this, you actually have specials and property taxes. Covering that debt that was issued very early in the process by the city for that infrastructure. And every year that goes by without an improvement on property, there's risk by the city of owning that infrastructure and owning that debt. So an RHID in some respects shortens your window of exposure for delinquency. And provides a massive amount of money in a short amount of time to retire that debt. So I just wanted to make that point, and again, you always have the discretion whether or not you want to do benefit districts. Because that petition, you can annex, you can zone, and you can deny the petition, that developer's gotta go out and finance that infrastructure. It's just hadn't happened for about thirty.
Just becomes a little marketing with a homeowner, because one says, oh, I don't have specials, oh, I got them, but they're gonna be shot shorter.
Right, right.
Well, and it's kind of confused, it's, it's complicated too, right, like understanding why your specials are only gonna last for so long. Um.
Yeah, but I do like the other stuff.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Protects the city taxpayers because they're on the hook for any delinquency. They're, they're the group that actually covers the debt, either through sales tax or property taxes, that's not being generated from that, that side.
I. I don't know how I feel about special, specials, uh, be, like, i- i- it doesn't make it. It, it makes it less attractive, um, especially when we have developments in the area without specials. Um.
We, we really have new development, new subdivisions. I'm not, I'm not familiar with one, I'm trying to think of a private developer who put in their own infrastructure. And then sold the lots with that cost associated with it, just hadn't happened in Manhattan for a long time.
Right, but like, outside of Manhattan, like.
Oh, sure.
In Potawatomi County, think like, in the area.
Yeah, Potawatomi County actually has extended benefit districts to the majority of the residential subdivisions that are just next to the city limits.
Okay. Um.
But, but I think you have a point there, and, you know, maybe it's time to talk about benefit districts again. Um, initially, we did benefit districts because we had small developers in town. That wanted to build eight houses but could only afford to build two, so we put in all the infrastructure, the city. And that made it more possible for them to do, it's really, doesn't save the homeowner any money, whether it's a special or whether it's on their mortgage, in fact. It's on their mortgage, it's better for taxes. Um, now we, we don't have as many, we were kind of protecting our, our, our in-town developers, which is. Now our, our, most of our in-town developers are, are really doing big things, and when they, when they build eight houses, they build eight houses, they don't build. One and then another and another.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's just, it's just a way of, um, financing building that we have done forever, and. I think there's pros and cons, and maybe it's time to, not to die, but to, um, to talk about that.
I, I think my only concern, I mean, I like how fast that investment's paid off to the city. Is like, are we? With the specials as well, are we bumping this out of workforce housing, I guess these don't have to be. RHIDs don't have to be, or, I got, sorry, I've, we're talking about too many different things tonight, Stephanie, but that was where I was like, man, I like. Did we, you know, I just don't want us to, to push ourselves out of, like, we build these affordable houses and then, affordable is, I'm not even gonna use that word, but. More realistic priced houses and then, um, we outprice the market because we've just added in significant specials on it. It, that's my concern on the consumer end, um, but I guess from the, the city end, either the. Dev- the developer selling it or they're paying it. Um, so wanting it to be attractive to everybody, I guess, is, is a challenge.
And you're not wrong.
Job, Stephanie.
Originally, originally, we did talk about, uh, what the, the school district and the county, the, the informal feedback that they've. Provided to us is that they would like to see these units in workforce housing range. Uh, what we're hearing from developers right now, it's gonna be very difficult to get new construction within that range. Um, but it all, we also have to look at it from a kind of a pro forma perspective of the RHID. If we had, uh, you, let me scroll back really quick, so I use the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar lot value. Because if I went much lower than that, this didn't perform, it, it did in the scenario where we're using specials and the increment. But back here, in this pay as you go, only using that property tax increment. It, it didn't pay off in a very timely manner at all, we were pushing pretty much twenty five years. So that's what I would caution you, is if we're looking for a developer to come in and say, we're gonna do an RHID. And it's all gonna be two hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes, and we're gonna pay our million dollars in infrastructure. It's really gonna be difficult, we have to have all of those homes, uh, kind of coming online all at once. And then we really have to hope that there's no depreciation and value there, because we need, the higher the home value, the quicker that that special pays off. I think what most developers are probably savvy enough to know, they need kind of a mix of different housing costs within a development. To make the RHID perform, um, but then still offer that, that kind of workforce housing range.
Thank you, that was helpful to know.
We did talk about that when we had the meeting with the county in March, maybe. Um, about that developers are per- permitted to mix the value of those, of the homes. So some of them may be more in that workforce housing range, Jamie, whereas others might be more, more, higher priced.
Um, Stephanie, how do you build inflation into all these numbers?
So for this one, I took a three percent, uh, annual increase in the property tax, or in the property value.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but. That's, I left it at that, I tried to be very conservative with my estimates, when we actually get into a specific project. That's where we work hand in hand with bond council, they have a very elaborate calculating tool that they use. And they help make sure that the city's investment in, is, in this is going to, um, we're gonna protect our taxpayers. That we're not gonna get involved in a project that won't potentially pay off. Jason, do you have anything to add to that?
No, it, it, it really does depend on how you structure it, but if you go back to the, the timeline. Where you're walking through the processes with all the different entities. I think you have it above.
Oh, this one, okay, okay.
Yep, so the, the formal application, the resolution and even the development plan. They're gonna give you a lot of specifics and a lot of details, and you're gonna be able to react to those in terms of what you want to see or don't want to see. If you have a, a group of a half million, seven hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred thousand dollar homes, and somebody's trying to implement the RHID. It, it may not be palatable, you know, I mean, they may need to sprinkle, uh, several three hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand dollar homes. Before you allow a five to six hundred thousand dollar home in a packaged type of process. You, you will have that flexibility, they're gonna need to provide a lot of detail for you all before we reach that, uh. Final process and they're, they're out for construction.
I just want to make a comment about the houses we're talking about, um. I don't know about any of you, but, uh. When I think of a starter house, uh, when, when I think of workforce housing, I think of someone buying their first house, right? And, um. I don't think the average person buying their first house is buying a new build house, especially these. I don't think the average person buying their first house is buying a new-build house, especially these days. Just, it's very expensive to buy brand-new houses that are built well. However, we do still need that used housing stock to be available and empty. And so we have this, and it's kind of a national thing, and part of it's because, you know, mortgage rates and things, but people are staying in their houses longer. So those older houses are not available to the first-time homebuyer, that young couple, young professional wants to buy a house. So even if we get more expensive homes that are built, and those houses sell, those houses, the houses that will be empty for the people moving into those houses will be available at a lower price. So it's kind of like with the rental thing, you know, inventory is good, generally, like, at all, any inventory is good. So, you know, even if we do an RHID and it's full of $750,000 houses, that increment is going to pay off really quick. And it may be that, that we're able to incentivize some of those and then have that shuffling around of Manhattan to have more of those lower-cost houses available. So just something to consider, if we do have higher, higher-value homes being built in these RHIDs, they're going to pay off faster, maybe even without the benefit district.
Commissioner, I do think some of that reasoning was the origination of the benefit districts in Manhattan, too. Getting more inventory, allowing older properties to become more available.
I would add, I didn't clarify it this time because we talked about it before, but your comment reminded me, when the Kansas Department of Commerce looks at an RHID, we have to tell them, this is the type of housing project we're getting ready to approve. They will look at our housing market analysis to say, is this type of housing really something that your community needs? And right now, the answer is yes, no matter what it is. If we get to the point, let's say that we are flush on $700,000 homes, and our housing market analysis recognizes that, we won't be able to use RHID as that tool. The Department of Commerce will say, nope, you already have enough of that, why don't you focus that tool on something else? So there is kind of that checks and balances back at the state. But at this point, it doesn't necessarily apply to our community since we need everything.
Yeah, I would just point out the Manhattan Area Housing Partnership Building that we've done the last two have been 55-year and older. And so we have 36 units in one place, and we just got the state funding for 30 more units, which will probably move people out of sort of homes, in, free up some more starter homes for people in Manhattan.
Stephanie, sorry, on these, the net gain of two or more units per, is that per, I mean, it's not per lot?
This is per project.
Per project?
Yes.
On all of them, is it per project?
Yes.
Not, in my mind, I was on like a minimum of a duplex trade, so that's not, like, that's, I'm like, what, okay.
We, what we really don't, because of the amount of work that RHID entails, I'm not necessarily interested in putting us through the exercise of doing an RHID for one lot, for one single-family house. And so we wanted to make sure that we're at least looking at multiple units with each of these. Part of that will be at your discretion as well, as you evaluate these projects that are being brought forward.
You do have subdivisions that are half-built, a third-built, just with multiple lots. We've contemplated RHIDs right next door. So you do have to look at it from a competitive factor and where you're going to leave certain lots, perhaps in abeyance for a long time, if you don't offer something similar. One lot, I think, I agree with Stephanie, that's a lot to expect. But you could have a string of five or six, like, directly across the street from a new RHID, new subdivision. And that owner would just be really left with tough property to move, given what you can do across the street.
Commissioner Armada, going back to an earlier question you had on if we are establishing an RHID in this scenario prior to the property being sold off, the preference would be yes, because we would have to have owner consent from each of those individuals. In most situations, we're probably going to be dealing with a developer. Doesn't say that we have to be, but that's what we're anticipating. Additional questions for me?
Do we have, or might we have any kind of requirement for the developer? Do they have to include any kind of pro forma, like, in their application?
I would have to go, I believe that that's part of the formal application. They have to give a very preliminary, just to make sure that some of those numbers will work. And then they actually have to end up hiring a firm to do a full analysis if we decide to move forward with that.
Now, and I'm assuming, like, if that pro forma says, hey, this project is already profitable before any incentive, we will have that information?
Yep.
And be, okay.
You can use that to make your determination.
Okay, thank you.
I can't guarantee the accuracy of those numbers, but yes, you would have that.
Commissioners, any additional comments or questions? Stephanie, thank you for, as always, very comprehensive and detailed presentations.
Welcome.
Is there any public comment concerning the presentations from the Community Development Department?
Josh Brewer, have a time for you, Mandy. I'm going to try to give public comment on what was a lot of information there. I think, big picture, I want to distinguish the way that I think about the housing market from the presentation as being one about residents from developers. We heard the word developer used a lot in the discussion tonight. And I want to think a little bit about reframing the housing market in terms of our residents. The people who live here, who work here, because we are talking about workforce housing. And when we reframe this issue just a little bit and think about these tactics, these funding tactics, it raises a question a little bit about strategy. And what is our overarching strategy for, for yes, adding supply, but also helping residents effectively compete in a market as they're trying to find affordable rents or starter homes, or second homes, or mother-in-law suites, or whatever it may be? And I think we had quite a bit of richness through our discussion on the Workforce Housing Steering Committee. And I would like to see a little bit of more of that as we talk about these tactics. And I think the approach that we use is called neighborhood revitalization. Neighborhood revitalization is a holistic approach, it's person-centered, resident-centered approach to improving individuals' quality of life within the neighborhood without disrupting their ability to live in that neighborhood. And that's really hard to pull off. At the community after community, you see programs that are really well-intentioned put money into neighborhoods and displace the people who made that neighborhood a great place to live. And I think that's one of my primary concerns that I brought up in the last time we saw these policies was, that downtown redevelopment district is my neighborhood. How are we being engaged in our future? How are my neighbors being engaged in designing our future? The second piece that I think I heard quite a bit in the presentation was program sustainability. I think the distinction between a revolving loan fund and a grant program is really, I think that's an interesting conversation that you all should consider. There isn't a lot of money here, it's $8 million. There are similar revolving loan funds at the state, so I'm not sure if that's going to be effective. Again, it doesn't seem like there's a lot of money there for direct subsidy. And of course, you're going to grind down on that revolving loan fund if you have quite a bit of admin there. Also, the sustainability of this sort of program, you've got such a small incentive, you're going to have to be so strategic to compete against the market demand forces. So if you're in one particular place, but you don't address hyper-consumption from an ADU market or something like, or from a short-term rental market or something like that, you're going to wash out your impact. And that's kind of the piece, I think, was most interesting, was the number of units, the affordability of those units. And I think Mayor Adamcheck, I think that's why that rubric is so important, is because it really lays out what are the standardized terms that these projects are going to meet. And lastly, just the stewardship of the subsidy, you're talking about a lot of money. Even though it may not be enough to create that sort of big impact we're asking for, it is still taxpayer money. And I think we've got a responsibility to steward that subsidy and make sure that we're not constantly having to re-raise these funds to subsidize and then lose it into the market and resubsidize again. So we'll always advocate for a stewardship mechanism. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. And thank you for your comments. One of the reasons I asked to review the matrix once more is referring back to another scorecard that I shared with Stephanie after a discussion several months ago produced by the Urban Institute, which does focus quite a bit on community engagement prior to development. And I think your point to neighborhood revitalization circles back to my comments earlier about that SOPO neighborhood, you know, Yuma Street, Pierre, Colorado. There are buildings there that don't look to be in the best condition, just from a street-side point of view. Are there some opportunities for some infill development in those neighborhoods while retaining the character of the neighborhoods?
I think you're absolutely right, Susan. I do think that I'm a little concerned when I hear two units and more than two units in that we had a really bad taste in our mouth over the super duplexes that went in and south of Points. They pretty much went from an older house that was probably in bad repair to four units, of which there had a lot of bedrooms. So they were sort of running one where one older house was to 16 people and pretty much paved the entire lot, you know. And we did not, at that time, have any way to say no to this kind of development. And so I think it's important, when we look at the infill, we look at, you know, you can imagine if you lived next door to that on either side, all of a sudden, you've got 16 kids probably, you know, living and with only 35 feet between you and them. And so it's just, I think we have to be really careful when we talk about infill and what goes in there and how it fits the neighborhood.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments?
Scott Seal, 1608 Denholm Drive. Just a few things, I'm not going to take my whole five minutes. Couple things I wanted to provide some just additional color around. I did appreciate both Mayor Adamcheck's comments about the south of Points area and Josh's general comments about what I like to say revitalization without gentrification, which I think is really important. And I wanted to add, Mayor, the old, what I call Old Northview area, around the school and the park, as another area that I think is opportunity for a lot of redevelopment, but still maintaining it as an affordable place. Two other things I wanted to just, I guess, a word of caution is to, we've, I'm thrilled with how far we've come over the last two years on this subject, in this room. And that's to all of your credit and city staff. I want to make sure that we don't get bogged down in the idea of 100% solvency because it's too big of a problem. There's nothing that, no single action or that we can take that will solve everything. We can't remove the entire beach of sand. All we can do is one grain at a time. And so I don't want to get bogged down in this won't solve everything, so let's keep trying until we can. Because then what will happen is that we do nothing. And so obviously, we don't want to act with haste and do things without thinking them through. But also just understand that we're just chipping away at this. We're just going to keep chipping away at it. So, and there's going to be some level of building the plane in the air that we're going to implement a policy, and it's not going to be perfect. There's going to be some things that we learn along the way, and that's okay. And we can make adjustments. And nothing says that just because we established this, we have, each individual proposal have the ability to say no. We don't ever have to pass one of these, but we will never pass one if we don't implement the structure. So, and I, kind of along that same thing, there's been several of these meetings where we, Stephanie comes up and gives a presentation, and there's lots of questions, and then she's set back to, and that can happen forever. So, don't, I guess, she's, as Stephanie pointed out, these policies are broad for the purposes of giving you guys discretion and flexibility. And so let's not spend too much time kicking the can down the road while we work on the periphery of the details and focus on the big picture, and then we can worry about the details on the individual projects. So, thank you very much for consideration. Thank you for carrying this to where we have. And I'm just, I'm really excited to see what the future holds. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott. And did you want to make?
Good evening, my name's Peter Clark. I'm CEO of Bayer Construction and BCC Development, one of our local developers. Primarily, we've been working in the western area, the Stonehaven Development, that is on the western side of town. We recently had the park that was donated to the city and has become a pretty nice benefit over that area. I wanted to speak a little bit on the RHID greenfield. That's primarily where we spend most of our area in developing, is in the greenfield aspect. And that would have the most impact on what we're doing right now on the Stonehaven property. I want to congratulate staff for putting together a really good presentation and explaining it very well. I think all the major points have been outlined. And the options are pretty clear, and we're pretty excited generally for the opportunity that if you pass the policy, that they will provide for potential applications and opportunities with projects moving forward. The two that were presented, I think, both have merit. And what they can see stand, can stand on their merits to benefit the city by increasing the total housing stock. Both the developer funding the infrastructure and then getting paid through the RHID, and also the benefit district process, and then having the RHID help pay down that special assessment faster. One, obviously, with the developer. Developer is going to incur the, primarily those lending costs, you know, the extra interest for borrowing that money for an extended period of time while they're getting the RHID. So in the instance that was shown, 18 years, they need about an 18-year, probably a 20-year loan on that infrastructure cost with their analysis to be able to pay that off. A private developer is probably going to pay, you know, somewhere in the realm of 6% to 8% interest on that type of a loan. Something to consider is that on a benefit district, and I'm not sure what the current interest rate is that the city's getting on those types of loans for infrastructure, but it's probably in that 3 range. There's substantial savings in interest in going through the benefit district, which is what is primarily the reason why benefit districts have been used so widely is because of that incremental benefit, to be able to save those dollars. So that to be considered. I know that there's potentially another way that you could structure it, but I'm not going to try to muddy the waters or just in favor of anything moving forward that would be a benefit to the housing stock. So, we're excited. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Peter. So, public comment is now closed. Commissioners, do you have any final questions for, or any remaining questions for Stephanie?
Thank you. I know this has been a lot. We all really appreciate it. And it's great that we've got something in front of us that we can actually vote on.
May I just ask a procedural question? Do we need to consider each policy individually, or can we make a motion to adopt all four? Okay. All right, so commissioners, we need to vote on items B, C, D, and E on the general. Okay. All right. So commissioners, we need to vote on items B, C, D, and E on the general agenda. Do we have a motion?
I'll take the first one.
Yeah.
Move to adopt Policy Manual Resolution Number 080624A for industrial revenue bonds for housing projects.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Minton has made a motion to adopt Policy Manual Resolution 080624A for industrial revenue bonds for housing projects, and Commissioner Mata has seconded. City Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Minton?
Yes.
Mayor Adamcheck?
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Amata?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
I would like to move that we adopt Policy Manual Resolution Number 080624-TAC-B for the workforce housing sales tax.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Opelt has made a motion to adopt Policy Manual Resolution Number 080624B for the workforce housing sales tax, and Commissioner McCullough has seconded. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Adamcheck?
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Amata?
Yes.
Commissioner Minton?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
I move we adopt Policy Manual Resolution Number 080624C for reinvestment housing incentive districts, R H I D infill.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Mata has made a motion to adopt Policy Manual Resolution Number 080624C for reinvestment housing incentive districts infill, and Commissioner Minton has seconded. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Amata?
Yes.
Commissioner Minton?
Yes.
Mayor Adamcheck?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
My turn? I move we adopt Policy Manual Resolution Number 080624D for reinvestment housing incentive districts, R H I D, Greenfield.
Second.
Commissioner, Commissioner McCullough has moved that we adopt Policy Manual Resolution 080624D for reinvestment housing incentive districts, Greenfield. And Commissioner Opelt beat me to the button, and he has seconded. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Minton? I mean, sorry, Commissioner?
Yes.
Commissioner Minton?
Yes.
Mayor Adamcheck?
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you all for your participation.
I would move that we adjourn the August 6, 2024, yeah, 2024 City Commission Meeting.
Second.
Commissioner Opelt has moved to adjourn the August 6, 2024 City Commission Meeting. Commissioner Mata has seconded. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Amata?
Yes.
Commissioner Minton?
Yes.
Mayor Adamcheck?
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you very much. Thank you, staff.